Welcome to the 2025 Pleasant View City Council Candidate Debate, proudly hosted by the Weber Fraternal Order of Police. This event is being recorded and, technology permitting, will be posted on social media to ensure those unable to attend can still view the discussion. My name is Derek Fisher, and I have the privilege of serving as President of the Weber Fraternal Order of Police. Our organization represents officers and deputies from across Weber and Morgan Counties. Named after the Weber River that flows through both counties, our lodge is dedicated to serving our members by providing support, organizing events, and acting as a representative voice with local administrative and city leaders. We are also deeply committed to fostering strong relationships with the communities we serve, whether through service projects, community events, or outreach initiatives. City council members play a critical role in managing budgets and resources that ensure our communities have essential public safety services. They work collaboratively with the mayor to chart the course that best meets the needs of their community. The Weber FOP invited all candidates for the Pleasant View City Council to participate in the debate. We're happy to see all were able to participate. The focus of tonight's debate is public safety, a matter that affects us all. Members of the public, as well as our public safety professionals, including police, fire, and dispatch, were invited to attend and submit their questions. Important dates: The election. The general election will be held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Votes will be mailed out approximately two weeks prior, arrived two weeks prior to the election. Questions were submitted via email prior to the debate, and those selected were chosen based on their relevance to the topic for public safety and community interests. Given the time constraints, we may not be able to address all the questions during the debate. However, any questions that are not asked will be forwarded to the candidates for written responses, which will be posted on our Facebook page. If time allows, after the prepared questions have been addressed, members of the audience will have the opportunity to ask the candidates additional questions. This portion will be facilitated by our event moderators. On the stand, we have Johnny Ferry and Brian Gray, Derek Draper, and Sean Wilkinson. Did I say that right?
You got it.
Okay, good. Introduction to the topic: Law enforcement has become an increasingly less desirable career across the nation for a variety of reasons. Among the most significant challenges are the extension of retirement eligibility to 25 years of service under a retirement plan that no longer competes with the benefits offered in surrounding states. Additionally, there has been a culture and policy shift toward greater legitimacy for offenders while simultaneously imposing stricter expectations and oversight on law enforcement officers. Compounding these issues, many agencies face a growing sense of diminished recognition and value for the critical work officers perform daily. Despite these obstacles, the Pleasant View continues to stand out for its professionalism and dedication. Pleasant View has consistently produced officers and firefighters who serve with integrity, commitment, and pride, reflecting both the strength of the community and the leadership that supports them. We have the opportunity to have moderators, so the FOP hosts the event, but the moderators ask all the questions and they maintain the order of the event. So, we won't be involved in anything other than recording. So, we have the privilege of having Lauren Johnson, the Director of Debate and Instructor for Communication at Weber State University, and Lindsay Brown, a Weber State student studying for Argumentation Debate Plans, continuing her studies in law after graduation. The rules for this debate: Each candidate will be allotted a two-minute introduction and closing. When a question is asked, each candidate will have two minutes to respond. If another candidate is addressed during the answer, the candidate has one minute to respond. At the moderator's discretion, additional follow-up questions may be asked. And I will turn the time over to them.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi. Each of you will be allotted a two-minute time period to introduce yourselves to us. So, we'll start with you, Sean. Two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sean Wilkinson. I have lived in Pleasant View for the last six years with my family. I've been married to my wife Sunny for 19 years. We have three boys, two at Weber High and one at Loman View Elementary. I currently work for Weber County as the Community Development Director, and in that role, I oversee many of the county's public services, including planning, engineering, building inspection, roads, property management, and our waste transfer station. So, I have a background in public service. I also serve on the Pleasant View City Planning Commission. I've done that for the last three years, and I've really enjoyed that, and that has helped me really understand a lot of the challenges and the opportunities that are facing Pleasant View right now as far as development, economic development, housing, and affordability, really. So, that is me in a nutshell. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Sean. Derek?
Hello, I'm Derek Draper. I've been married 23 years to my wife Victoria. I've got five kids, we've got four grandkids, we've got one off at the University of Tennessee, and I've got two going to Weber High in WIC. So, I'm like, oh, trying to get them out of here. So, I don't know if I will save money, because my older ones are still expensive for me. But, so, I live in Pleasant View. I've been there about six, seven years now. I really enjoy the city. I enjoy the area a lot, and a little bit about me is I'm a disabled military veteran. I'm a retired police officer from Ogden City, and currently, I just collect a paycheck from that. My wife takes care of me. So, I run around, get stuff, and that's me.
Great. Thanks, Derek. Brian?
Hi, my name is Brian Gray. I live in Pleasant View for the past 12 years with my wife Julie. We have six kids, eight grandchildren. We moved here from Phoenix, Arizona. I spent the last 20 years there. That's where I met my wife. Prior to that, I come from Philadelphia. I was actually born in the projects there. So, I moved to, I moved to Phoenix trying to have a better life and realized that Phoenix was turning into LA and didn't want to be there. So, we moved to Utah and found Pleasant View, and it is, it's home big time. It's probably the, it's not one of those places where you go on vacation and you come home and, oh, we're home. It's you go home and it, I love our little town, and I'm happy to be here. And I just want to continue that character and make it better.
Thanks, Brian. Johnny?
All right. So, I'm Johnny Ferry. Probably the easiest way to get to know me is just go to my website, johnnyferry.com. My wife Jennifer and I celebrated 25 years of marriage recently, and she teaches at Majestic Elementary, second grade there. My son-in-law Austin works at JD Machine, right there in Pleasant View. My daughter's a producer at KSL. My son is up at Utah State, and my other son is on a mission in Santiago, Chile. I was born and raised in Boxholder County. My family, five generations of cattle farming and ranching, that's where I spent most of my time, all the way up through college. From college on, I married my wife, and our family owns a company called Honeyville. We're a food manufacturer. We manufacture a variety of different grain products. Many people around her know us for our Kodiak cakes. After we were married, we moved to Rancho Cucamonga, California, spent 12 years there, and then the last 12 years, we moved back here after we built our headquarters in the Ogden BDO, and that's where I've been working, up until most recently, where I took a position as the President and CEO of the Utah Manufacturers Association, and that represents 5,000 different manufacturers here in the state. And that's been my, something I've done for about six weeks now, and I spend a lot of time working with the state legislature, as well as with different manufacturers across the state, understanding the needs and improving business environments. I love Pleasant View. We've spent, since we moved from California, we spent 12 years here and raised all of our kids, all of them went to Weber High, have a love for the city and opportunities to serve within the city. I serve on the Board of the Major Brent Taylor Foundation, and we do a lot of work within this northern Utah area and other things that help us to get involved. And that's really the thing here, is I'd love to be involved and work and be a part of this here in Pleasant View. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Johnny. So, the first portion of this debate will consist of, I'm going to ask you a series of yes or no questions, and we'll go down the line, and you'll respond. And at the end of the nine questions, I'll give you each two minutes to clarify your response or add anything additional that you'd like to say in response to the yes or no questions. Yeah?
Is that, sorry, just the responses? Per question, two minutes?
No, at the end of the nine questions.
At the end of everything.
Yeah, if there's anything additional you'd like to add.
Perfect.
Okay, our first question, and we'll start with you, Johnny, with your response, is within your six, within your first six months, will you attend a Citizens Academy or complete public safety ride-alongs?
Yes, I will.
Brian?
Yes, actually, sounds like fun.
Derek?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Great. Second, and we'll start with you, Sean. If elected, will you meet regularly with the Weber Fraternal Order of Police and other first responder representatives to discuss concerns?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. You have my yes.
Excellent. And Johnny, we'll start with you for our next one. Will you publish a 90-day plan within the first 30 days of taking office?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Brian?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
No.
Okay, great. Four, and we'll start with you, Sean. Will you publicly disclose your top three campaign contributors' name and city before Election Day?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, how about now?
Yes.
Excellent. And we'll start back over there with you, Johnny. Will you recuse yourself from any vote in which a contributor presents a clear conflict of interest?
Absolutely. Yes.
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 Excellent. Next, do you oppose defund the police efforts to reduce core public safety services?
No.
Do I oppose it?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Do you oppose defund the police efforts to reduce core public safety?
Oh, yes, I do oppose it. Yeah, sorry.
Excellent. Thanks, Sean.
Appreciate it.
Derek?
Oh, goodness. Yes. Yes, I do oppose it.
Excellent. And will you support pay or benefit adjustments for police and fire if market data show that Pleasant View is below its peers?
Yes.
Yes.
The, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Will you add a formal resident feedback step, i.e., some kind of notice, some kind of comment, before major ordinances?
Yes.
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 Yes, I will.
And our last yes or no question is, will you commit to a civility and transparency pledge for council conduct and public meetings?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know. I'd have to see what the pledge is.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And I'll give you each two minutes. We'll start with you, Johnny. Any comments, additional things that you would like to add on any of these questions?
Yeah, just the, I think two in my mind popped up, two as we were going through them. One, that last question about the pledge, again, it's, need to understand what it is before you commit to anything. I think that's prudent and common sense in making sure. And then the other one in relation to market data, again, it needs to be understood what is being presented. I think that's fair.
Okay. Brian?
Okay, there's a couple of them that I have as well. For the last one about the pledge, I'd say, I'm a firm believer in Robert's Rules of Order, and I think we should go by that. And the one prior to that, I believe it had to do with citizens, with major number eight?
Resident feedback steps?
Yes, I think that should be the norm.
Yeah.
Not the exception. And also, as far as defunding the police, I think police are there to keep the peace. They're very important to us. We should treat them as such, and I would, I would push for much more involvement with the police, with officers, with our community, and also with our schools. I think that's super important.
Excellent. Thanks, Brian. Derek?
Okay, so me on the pledge and the last one, what was that? What was it again?
It was, will you commit to a civility and transparency pledge for council conduct and public meetings?
Yeah, so that, I'd have to see what that says.
Okay.
That's like, I don't like doing pledges unless I know what they're saying, so, yeah. We'd have to know what that says I'm pledging to. I don't just do a pledge to pledge. The benefits for police, I have no issue with benefits for police at all. When we're doing the, the, when we're comparing it against cities, how they do, to make sure you're collecting the right amount of money, right? I know how that process works. I've been involved in that process for many years, because I'm a retired police, and so that needs to be cleaned up. Like, I know that for a fact. And so, once that's cleaned up, I have no problem with doing that. You can't, you have to be compared to same-sized cities, you know? We're Pleasant View, can't be compared to North Ogden, because we're not the same size. So, there's things that need to be changed there. But, you know, I don't have a problem paying people more money to get quality police in our city. And like, to defund the police, I'm absolutely against that, you know? I'm a big firm believer in freedom of speech, and the freedom of speech you need to protect is the one you do not like, you know? And that's what I did for my time till I retired. So, I'm trying to think what else. There was something else one of these guys talked about, but I can't remember what it is now. So, I guess that's it.
Okay. And Sean?
Okay. Just to be clear, I do not support defunding the police. I just want that to be very clear. Sorry for that mistake. Okay, the, I want to address the first 90-day plan. So, it's going to take at least 90 days just to get in the flow of what the city council is about. I'd hate to put something out there that is offensive or is not real and is just something that I put out there. I'd rather wait, see what's going on, understand things a little better, and then be able to put out a plan for what I feel is actually something that I can accomplish. So, that's my clarification on the first 90-day plan. As far as the pledge, I agree with what has been said, that, I would need to see what that pledge says, but certainly, ethics and civility are important. The public comment before major ordinances, state law already requires that. So, legislative items that come before the city council are required to have public hearings, especially for ordinance changes or zoning changes, things like that. So, that's definitely important. The public should have a voice, and the law currently requires that. I think that's it. Thank you.
Excellent. The second portion of the debate, I'll hand it over to Lindsay.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Hello.
I am a little bit tougher of a moderator. All right. So, my first question, it says, first 90 days, what will you do in your first 90 days if elected? And I'm going to start with Sean.
Okay. Thank you. First 90 days, I'm going to breathe. I'm going to observe. I'm going to make sure I understand how the city council is functioning, what are the important topics that have already been addressed or are currently in discussion. And I think those are the most important things within that first 90 days. Now, I've said in previous debates that we've had, that one of the first things that I would like to do is look at our zoning ordinance, a comprehensive review of our zoning ordinance. It's, I've served on the Planning Commission. We review that regularly. It needs some work. So, I think, and that alone is more than a three-month process. So, I think that is the number-one thing that I would take on. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
So, in the first 90 days?
Yep.
What would I do? Well, first 90 days, we go in and just try to get a feel for what's going on there. Like, I feel like our council is just a little hand of the mayor, and they all vote yes for whatever the mayor wants. That's how I feel. And like, they vote 90% of the time, 95 or 98% of the time, for whatever he wants done, which, in some cases, I don't. Everything's not a good idea, just so you know. And so, to not, to go like, you've got a controversy going on where a city comes together, and then everybody votes yes anyway, there's a problem with elected people. And so, because if there's an outcry, you need to do the right thing. You're elected by the people, you know what I mean? So, you need to do what the people want, not what people who have money want, to build houses and stuff. So, you know, my thing for the first 90 days, I don't have a problem putting out a plan, because plans can change. You know what I mean? I can put out a plan, say, hey, look, this is what I'd like to accomplish, this and that, and maybe you're overzealous, and it's like, hey, the zoning, and it's like, yeah, this is going to take like a year. You know what I mean? Or it's wages for police, you know? You have a year to negotiate that whole time. So, if they're waiting until the last month to do it, then I guess they get what they get. So, you know, I think all that comes into play. So, like, as far as putting out a 90-day plan, it's pretty simple. Like, one thing for sure, I know for a fact that I would, I would address immediately and that we will address even through these things and just council meetings, is the fact we've got a water tower, we've got funds of a grant for a water tower that have just been sitting there, and it's not built. Who's responsible? Who's held accountable? Or why don't we just give the money back? You know what I mean? You've already held on to it too long? You know what I mean? It's going to run out unless they do something with it. So, I disagree with that. If you have the funds, spend them. Thanks.
Derek, I have a follow-up question. So, are you proposing that your 90-day plan will or can be fluid?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ready for me? Okay. The first thing I'll do is familiarize myself with all aspects of the city and work on transparency and more availability of what's going on with the votes. Make sure that they know where we all stand and that we can, I'd like to work on more citizen engagement. I think that's super important. And then we can make better decisions, I feel like. And also, I believe that we also need to be, need to be able to move with what our citizens are telling us.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Johnny?
All right. So, in the first 90 days, I would address this as if I addressed other projects that I've been involved with, and there are four parts to that. That would be, understanding the procedures, understanding the policies, connecting with the people, and then getting involvement in the community, in the feedback from the community. Those four things are important to me. Specifically, on the procedural side, understanding the calendar of events and how they relate to everyday work as a city council member, the meetings that are involved, how they flow, who's in, who will be at the meetings, when is it open, and what kind of topics to discuss. I'd be interested in, on the policy side, just on understanding the ordinances and the procedures that go along with the different policies, how they came about, understand the history, and then look for opportunities to improve. On the people's side, we gotta, you gotta recognize our past. Those who have been involved have thought through many of the things that we're going to go through, and engage with those people and individuals who have spent time, spent a lot of their service in the city. I think that's really important to call upon past experience. And then I'd also look at current leaders, those who are going through the process, who I would work with on the city council. I think that's really important from the people's standpoint. And then finally, from the community, businesses. Businesses play a vital role in how we engage in our community, how we gain financial taxes and other things, the revenue that comes in. Think about the city employees who are every day touching the different parts of our city, and then finally, the law enforcement and those who serve our communities in police, fire, medical, military. Understanding how they are involved in the community and how they can help and what support we can give them. So, again, I think the four things that are important to me, the procedures, policies, people, and the community.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. My next question is, will of the people versus best judgment? What guides your vote and why? And I'm going to start with Derek, and then I'm going to go backwards from Sean and around.
Will of the people versus best judgment?
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that's the biggest problem, let's start with the thing there. That's the biggest problem with our, with all elected officials nowadays, is you're elected by the people, and if your best judgment overrides the will of the people, then you haven't done a good enough job explaining your best judgment. Because if you can't convince somebody to think the way you think or justify the actions you want to take, you shouldn't be in the position, period. Like, we're out of high school, you know what I mean? There is no excuse for lack of communication skills. And so, and I think that's the dividing factor on most issues, is the fact that, when you've been in politics too long, you use certain phrases, you know? It's public record, you know what I mean? Because I don't want to tell you where to find it. It's public record? Okay, well, where do I find it? Ah, the city's website, or it's posted somewhere. Yeah, okay, well, you go to the city, and they say, yeah, well, you can grandma request it from the state. Like, why don't you just give it to me? And so, like, I have issues with a lot of those things. I don't like, I don't like it's public record, for one. I think that's a total cop-out. I think it's a lack of people in elected positions, like, they're supposed leaders? They ain't leaders, because they're giving you BS answer, and they won't answer the question. And so, you know, my issue with, like, elected official in general is not, even if I'm against the way you're voting, like, I like Mike Lee. I'll just tell you this. I like Mike Lee. He votes a certain way sometimes that I don't like, but I respect the fact that he comes on and explains his position. That's why I still will vote for that guy. And that's what I would try to emulate.
Thank you.
Okay. In the planning profession, which I have been a part of for the last 20 years, we have a couple of terms. One is NIMBY, not in my backyard. Another is YIMBY, yes, in my backyard. The will of the people is often based on emotion. It's based on just what they have had as their vision for the area that they live in. That, no, that is not to say it's not important, but the law should rule, and my best judgment would always be based on facts. We have city employees for a reason. We have public works employees. We have planning employees. We have an engineer. They have studies that are done. Decisions that I make will be based on the best information that I have available. I might make my neighbors angry. I might make the other city council members angry. I don't know how I'm going to vote until the issue is presented. But I've done this, I've served as a planning director, I've been in countless Planning Commission meetings where, after a decision, the public has gotten up and pointed fingers and yelled and screamed, and, you know what? If we followed the law and it was the right decision, I'm okay with that. At the same time, there are members of the public who have a lot of knowledge about decisions that are being made. In western Weber County, for example, we have a lot of farmers who know the lay of the land. They know where flooding has occurred in the past. They know how water flows. Those are things that we should be listening to. The public does have good knowledge. So, it's really a balancing act, but at the end of the day, we need to make the right decision based on facts, and that's how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
To start off the question, I think recognizing what you were elected for is to represent the people of whatever group that is, and in this case, it'd be our community, our Pleasant View community. So, in the argument of will of the people versus best judgment, I think the first thing, there needs to be an understanding of the will of the people. Irregardless, if, right out the bat, if I believe differently than what I perceive as the will of the people, the most important thing is to first understand the will of the people. So, to get to that, this is the challenge that we have in a community that may or may not be engaged in every issue. And so, depending on the size and scope of the issue, you first have to understand the impact and what it will do to the community. But I think in reaching out and getting feedback from the community is key. You won't know the will of the people if you don't find out what the will of the people is, and that's going to come in many ways. That can be just being open. My door is always open. You can come in and talk to me and talk through the issues and give me your perspective on what you think. The other thing to consider is the amount, not just somebody who screams loud, but The other thing to consider is the amount, not just somebody who screams loud, but the amount of touch points that you get on this particular issue. And I think it's important to record, to capture that as a representative. Because in, in the community, you're going to have many issues that pop up and some will be of importance and some really won't be. And the importance level will be, it'll be a social thing. It'll be a financial thing. It'll be something that you will have to make a decision on that'll be based on improving or, or improving the laws that, that are there. So when it comes to the, number one, understand the will of the people. And then from there, you can also then say, well, recognize, be humble enough to say, I don't have expertise in this area. I'm going to seek it and then make my best judgment call based on that. Always at the end, have an explanation of why you voted the way that you did. Explain why you did, why you chose or said, or voted the way that you did. I think that's really important. But remember that you're representative of the, of the council, not necessarily just a representative of your own, own beliefs and what you want to do.
Thanks, Johnny. I do have a follow up question for you. You mentioned both financial and social as being means of things that guide your vote. Which one of those is your main contributor as to what guides your vote?
Financial will always be one of the first things you have to consider because it has to be fiscally, fiscally responsible when making a decision.
Okay.
I think, I think that that leads off. Now, once you get past that and it's something that, then you're making a judgment call to how to utilize limited funds. And then, then it becomes more of what's best for the community in whatever's being proposed, right? So number one, make sure it's fiscally responsible. Number two, then, hey, is this, what, what is, when am I going to get the most bang for my buck?
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Brian?
So the first thing I would do is actually hold some meetings with those people. If there's a big issue on something and, and they don't understand what I, what I see, I think I should have meetings with them. And invite, invite the public, speak with them about it, state my case and listen to their opposing views. And also listen to the experts. I think that's super important. Whoever, whoever may be involved, be it city workers, be it the, you know, the police force or, or the fire department or, or, you know, people who, who have knowledge in those things. I think it's really important, also business owners. And then I think I would make a choice from there based on the inputs and what's best for the city that, that I, I believe because we're voted in by those people too, it has to be, you know, it has to be, if I can't sway people, then not sure. I think I'd have to take that on a case by case basis.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. My next question. So generally, people who are running for a council seat usually know their strength and weakness. What is your greatest weakness and greatest strength as a potential council member? And I am going to start with Brian and we're going to go Johnny and around.
Okay. Greatest strengths. I would say my greatest strengths, biggest greatest strength is thinking outside the box. I've come into jobs in the past and used experience from other jobs and related it to those. Just for instance, in, in Phoenix, I worked for a company that we kept having the, we had a water treatment plant inside the building or inside the plant. So the, the government was in there checking our water treatment plant and got carte blanche to look through the whole place. And we're always writing us up for something and we had to fix something else. So in order to get rid of that, I suggested we just evaporate it. It wasn't that hard to do. It was just water. And then you shovel it up as dirt and put it in the trash can and it's no longer, it's no longer hazardous waste. So those are the kind of things we have to think about here is staying outside the box with things. I just started a couple of months ago and in a shop and at a major casting company, I was the nuclear quality engineer. Now I run all of the machining lines of this casting company. And my goal has been to eliminate waste right off the get go. So in my first quarter, I, I reduced waste by 75%. And that would be my goal in government as well is to reduce the waste and, and find new and unique ways to do things because there's always, always a, a new way to do something. As far as weaknesses, I would say taking things on like this would be one of my weaknesses because I could just retire. And I feel like my wife says I can never slow down. I would say that's the biggest weakness.
Thank you.
Biggest, I'm going to start with the weaknesses that, that, I'm going to start there. I have many, but I'll just mention one. I tend to be optimistic and I bring that up as a weakness in the sense that sometimes the, the, my rose colored glasses paint everything that way. And I, I see optimism, opportunity in many different, many different projects and things that I take on. People I work with, I look at them and I see, I'm optimistic about who they are and sometimes overlook weaknesses that they might have too. So I think that that would be something that I've always got to work on. I'm always, I'm always looking for the good in the people, but there are, there are things that I recognize I need to be careful of that, whether they be ideas or people, projects. On the strength side, I think the, there are many strengths, but I'll, I'll mention a few. One of the strengths that is important that I think to the community would be connections, connections to my current role in, in manufacturing, the opportunities to showcase manufacturers here in the, in our community. Coming in from, to the state of Utah or in the state of Utah, looking for growth or expansion, opportunity, because we have zoning that, that would, would work within that industrialized area, particularly there on, on Highway 89. I think that that would give opportunity. The other thing that I would say is strengths is, is just always being willing to work in the community and offer myself when it's needed. And I've done that ever since I've been here and will continue to do so regardless of this position. I think that that's a, a strength of always being willing to serve and, and support and be a part of things.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to start with weakness as well. So from the time I was a little kid, I would, the thing that was yelled at me from the sidelines was, you need to be more aggressive. You need to go get it. And I think that aggressiveness means, in this case, assertiveness. I have a tendency to sit back, to listen. I'll make comments, but if somebody wants to dominate the conversation, I'm, I'm okay to sit back and let them do that. And I know I cannot always do that in situations like this. So that is something that I will definitely work on and it, that's just been my personality, but yeah, that, I can see how that could be a weakness. As far as strength goes, I think my career in public service is my strength. I have a background and expertise in planning and zoning. I understand it. That's what I've done for the last 20 years. And I think that can be a huge asset in my service on the city council. So with that background, with the relationships I have with elected officials and other representatives throughout the county, including relationships at UDOT, at the Wasatch Front Regional Council, the Weber Area Council of Governments, and, and other organizations like that. I, I know people. I also know how government works. Now, I guess that could be said, that's a weakness, being in it that long. But at the same time, I think I've probably seen everything. And I have not always agreed with decisions that elected officials have made. And I think coming from the employee's side of public service, not the elected side, I think that will be a big benefit for me coming in and, and working with our elected, or with our city employees as well as the elected officials. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. All right.
Hold on. I gotta go.
Oh.
Hold on, girl.
Sorry, Derek. Sorry, sorry.
Okay. So strengths and weaknesses, right? Okay. So like I got a combo of strength and a weakness. And that is my assertiveness, I guess. Because I'm not scared to speak my mind. You'll never know where I stand on an issue because I'm not scared to tell you ever. And that's a strength to some people and it rubs people wrong. So I consider it a weakness in another. But I believe in just being a straight shooter. You tell it like it is and like it's just, everything's going to fall where it needs to fall. I tend to come across wrong a lot when I talk. And when you talk to me one on one, it'll, it comes across better. But I think like another strength would be like in government, like I'm from government, my whole, like I was in the military and then I was in city government, you know? Government is this. When is the last time you've seen government not stick their hand out and say, give me more money? Never, because it never happens, ever. And so business as usual needs to stop. Everyone has a budget. The budget only increases. It never is massaged, ever. It increases. And so like my experience at Ogden, they'd run 30 officers down. Then at the end of the year, all the chiefs and the higher ups would get a raise. It was fantastic. And then they'd ask for the same amount of money or an increase the next year when no one else got a raise. So like things need to be worked out, but like strengths, I have no problem speaking my mind. Weaknesses is I have no problem speaking my mind. That is one of the biggest, my wife's like, you just need to be quiet more. So anyway, that's it.
Thank you. All right. My next question, differences and respect. Some people take offense to being asked about differences. Still, voters must choose among different ideas. Identify one concrete way you differ from other, from your peers and explain how you'll disagree respectfully while you, while still listening and, listening to and addressing community concerns. And Derek, I'm going to start with you because I feel like this will be perfect for you.
I know. It'll be great. Okay. So differences for me is I have no problem speaking my mind, period. So like I'll just give you an example. Like in my police days, you'd have like a lieutenant come into your briefing. You have little briefings, you know, when you're a cop, you go into briefing room, they kind of go over about 20 minutes or so and then they kick you out to patrol. Anyway, they'd come in and they say, hey, this is a great thing. And I'd be like, how is that a great thing? Like I don't have a problem calling, because again, if you're, if you're my boss, you should be able to explain it to me what, why it's so great since you're saying it's great. And I'm arguing with you saying it ain't great and these are the reasons why. And the conversation ends with, well, it's because I said so and I outrank you. Well, that's fantastic. That solves a lot. And I feel like cities and our elected officials, after you've been in, I think your first term in office, because you're, you're green, I guess is what you'd call it. But after that, you continue in politics, you can see people are very smooth talkers. Very smooth. They tell you whatever they want. And if you just follow them around, that same question will be asked and they'll say something else to somebody else. And so like that's all you have to do. Just follow people around who are politicians and watch them talk. They won't say the same answer ever. They, they, they're appeasers and that's what I dislike about politicians. Like say what you mean, mean what you say, and then just follow through with it. And so that, those are kind of my differences is you'll never know where, you'll never ever have a problem knowing where I stand because I'm going to tell you where I stand. And if we have an issue, then let's resolve it. Like convince me to your side if I'm disagreeing with you. Or I'm, because I'm going to try to convince, but like, and maybe there's some massage thing to where we, you know, that was really good. So maybe I'll, I'll make my decision based on this. And so that's what I would say.
I do have a follow up question. Of course I do, right? So how would you respectfully, I mean, if you didn't have the same opinion, how would you respectfully disagree with that person and come to some type of consensus addressing the concerns?
Well, it's in talking to people. So like my background is law enforcement. All you do is show up on hot topic calls, husband and wife fighting, people in disagreements over land, this is my property line. You learn how to communicate in a manner like sometimes there's winner and loser. We try to make it so, you know, you try to make it so every, if everybody can win, that's, that's what the ultimate goal is. If everybody leaves there that they've at least been, been heard, I think that's the biggest thing is you, you left, your concern was heard. You know what I mean? So I would say probably that's the biggest, because you, you don't always get your way. You know what I mean? So that's kind of what I'd say, I think.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Let's go with Brian.
Okay. Can you repeat it just so I'm sure?
Yeah, no problem.
Which part of it, it seems like it's?
No problem. Differences and respect. Some people take offense to being asked about differences. Still, voters must choose among different ideas. Identify one concrete way you differ from your peers and explain how you'll disagree respectfully while still listening and addressing the community concerns.
Okay. So I think one of the biggest ways that I differ from most of my peers here, not all, is that I'm a budget hawk, but mainly that I'm always looking for disruptive technology to find something, to figure something out. When, when I was young and I started in, in a machine shop and the first, first thing I learned was all the old guys saying, you, you don't know anything, you shut up, you just do what I tell you to do. But maybe I bring something to the table that they don't know about. And then, and then I watched those same people when CNC machines come out and say, that's just a fad. It's going to go away. Two things I learned from that. Number one is that, is that anybody can bring to the table new things from other experiences they've had outside of that, which can teach you so much more. And if you're willing to learn, no matter what you know about something, they can bring, again, I go back to the whole disruptive technology thing, applying one thing to another that you would never even think of. So it's important to pay attention to that. And then the other one was never look at any kind of technology or anything that's going on and say, ah, it's just a fad. Oh, I don't need that or something like that. Now they've got all kinds of cool things out that nobody ever imagined when I was young. So I would say that, that would be the biggest thing. And, and when it comes to disagreeing, I would try to deescalate and, and start off by following Robert's Rules of Order. And I think that's important for a meeting to understand and, and give everybody a chance to talk and deal with it.
Perfect. Thank you.
In addressing the idea of, of how I differ from my peers here, I would first want to mention that this is what our third or fourth event that we've been together. And each of them have some incredible strengths, things that I knew and would have never known had I just been a member of the community and, and saw them up on stage. But as I've got to know them personally, there's some great strengths that they have. So in calling this and that, I just would say that if with me personally, what you're getting in, in my package is a experience. It's the experience that comes into play. And my experience would come in, in, in these ways. Number one, my background, I grew up on a farm. I grew up in the agricultural world. My family has very, been very involved within the state on the agricultural side of things. And then number two, as I, as I graduated from college, you, I spent 24 years in manufacturing to date. And that has, that really gave me a perspective on running business, dealing with employees, working, working on projects. And then finally, I think maybe, maybe most important would just be ability to build relationships, ability to, to take existing relationships and apply them. Whether it be in my relationships like that currently exist politically, whether they be with the business and community leaders here or also just connections that I have made through the years, just through service, working with people and, and spending time with others. I think that that's, that would be a different thing, something that I could bring that's unique.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. So one of the main things that I've heard, because we've talked about it a lot, it comes back to housing and it comes back mainly to multifamily housing and affordable housing. And some of the things I've heard in, in some of our past debates are that we don't need any more in Pleasant View or that's, that's what attracts crime or we have enough and, and that's not what we need. I disagree with that. And I think, and that's okay. We can talk about it. And I think that's the best way to handle a disagreement is simply to talk and to hear someone's opinion and share my opinion. And it's okay if we disagree and I can show facts and they can tell me why they feel the way they do and that's okay. But when it comes down to that affordable housing issue, it is definitely. But when it comes down to that affordable housing issue, it is definitely needed in Pleasant View. Now, it's needed in the right places, and it's needed in the right way, and that's going to take some work from the city council and the planning commission to make sure that it is put in the right place, and it's done appropriately. We'll need public comment with that, we'll probably need some changes to the general plan with that, but I think that's maybe where I differ the most, uh, from some of the things that I've heard.
Great, thank you. All right, so, my next question is, community and engagement. Specifically, how will you keep residents informed and involved, uh, with tools, cadence, acceptability, uh, or, sorry, accountability and transparency?
Do that one more time.
No problem. Community and engagement. Specifically, how will you keep residents informed and involved with tools, cadence, accountability and transparency?
Start it here?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, you're okay.
Blah, blah, man.
You looked at me, I figured, no, it's good. Okay. Um, as far as accountability and transparency, there should be no question about what is being done in the city, and that should be readily available to citizens. I, I agree, and I think, for the most part, it is, all of the minutes are published on the website, um, the budget is out there, if people want information, it is out there, and it should be, and it should be promoted, uh, so that it's easy to find. I have noticed, it's hard to find the code on the city's website, and that's one thing I would definitely change. Uh, as far as how to spread that word, we do have the city newsletter, I, I talked about that a lot last time, that goes to basically every resident in the city, maybe not some who are renting, but, uh, I think that's, that needs to be a little bit more robust with information. I also think that the city can do a little bit more, um, with email and social media. So, there are, I think it's a multi-pronged approach, it can't just be the newsletter, I think, it, it, people are online, it's important that we have that presence, um, and that, that the information is easily accessible.
Thank you.
Okay, so, read that to me again, sorry, so I don't go off on crazy stuff.
Uh, community and engagement. Specifically, how will you keep residents informed and involved with tools, cadence, accountability and transparency?
Yeah, so my, my, my thing is, I've been saying this for years now, is, I think you need to know how your elected officials vote, they say, hey, there's the minutes, go look at the minutes. Well, I just pulled up the minutes, and the minutes don't say nothing. They don't say how anybody voted, they don't say anything. So, um, like, I don't know what's going on there, 'cause, like, I pull up another one, let's see if this one has how people voted, it doesn't have how anyone voted on here anywhere. And so, again, minutes are fantastic, but my question would be, why aren't the votes on here of how people voted? Huh? Well, since I'm kinda the crazy one, because they don't want you to know how they voted so they can lie to your face when you question them on it, because unless you go to the council meeting, you don't know what happened, and they can say whatever they wanna say, because that is politics. So, um, my thing is, we have a newsletter that's published, the backside of the newspaper is always empty, and you get this, the mayor's note, you know, we're gonna get a new mayor, so hopefully it's worth reading, like, that thing's a joke, and so, you know, have a great day, like, who, like, tell us what's going on in the city, please, tell us something that's going on, what's your stance, give us opinion. And so, on the backside, city council meetings are, it should be run by the city council, not the mayor, it's not a mayor's meeting, for one. It's the city council meeting, the mayor can sit down, and when he's questioned by the council, he can give an answer, he has to be there. But he doesn't get to run the meeting and interject his opinions and take over the meeting, it's a city council meeting, the city council runs the meeting. And so, that's one thing I have an issue with. And then, the other is, how our elected officials vote needs to be included on the back of the Waterville, so you can hold them accountable. That's it.
Thank you. Brian?
Okay, uh, so, uh, I think that, uh, that we need to, we need to just have a Pleasant View social media page, where we can put out everything, 'cause there, there are, like, community pages, or there is a Pleasant View community page, but it's run by a private citizen. The, the city should actually have its own, um, and they can put all that information on there, and it would be really helpful, 'cause then people could look at it if they wanted, it's right there. Also, uh, I think it would be a good idea to personally invite people to show up. Actually, I mean, we have all their information, call so many people every, every month and say, hey, why don't you show up, and then eventually, we'll have quite a crowd. Um, another thing that, uh, really worked for me, and it's gonna be kinda funny, but if you let them know immediately prior, like, the night before, and then that day, hey, we're having this thing, and, uh, and, uh, cinnamon rolls never hurt, they'll be there. Um, that worked really good for cleaning the church, and if people will clean a church for cinnamon rolls, they'll show up to a council meeting. Also, the newsletter, I agree, it, it has, should have information about votes, and, uh, and, and I'm gonna agree with him again, on another one that, that the mayor's notice is kumbaya, it's rah rah. Yeah, yeah, look at this, oh, it's fall, fall colors are out, blah, 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 it's like, what have we done? What, what are we really doing here? Uh, it should have the info about the vote, about the votes on it, and, and, uh, what's coming up, what, what we've done, should be more serious than that. And I think we should offer email as well, by emailing some of the residents, and then see how they respond to it, offer them to get on an emailing list, and then we could just put that list on blast, it's super easy to do, I'm a member of a couple groups that that's what I do with, and blast out. That's it.
Thanks, Brian. Johnny?
In regards to, uh, ways of communicating, the number one way of always communicating with anybody is one-on-one. Now, that sometimes is limited because of the amount of time, but if I can ever have a conversation with you, and explain whether it be my position or understanding your position, that always goes a lot farther, because it just, it puts it at a human level. I think that that's very important, to always be open to those kind of communications. When time is limited, there are other ways to communicate, and one of those ways is with the city newsletter. So, continue with the city newsletter, continue giving information, try to improve it, try, find ways that connect with the citizens and, and meet their needs there, that's always important. And finally, I think for me, a commitment for me would be, at minimum, a monthly, um, social communication coming from me, indicating, um, what's happened, what's going on in the city, what are upcoming events, but also talking about some of the things that people have done, uh, pictures or, or videos, or, uh, posting things that are important to me, and why I voted the way that I did. The other way that can, can be very useful is putting polls out there, there's technology that exists now, that we can take polls, we can find out and very easily get those polls out in front of a number of people, to find out what issues are important to the citizens of Pleasant View, and I think that's an important part in that communication piece. Those are the things that I would, I would suggest.
All right, thank you, Johnny. Um, all right, my next question is, campaign finance transparency. Who are your largest contributors, and why did you accept their support? How will you handle any perceived conflicts? And let's start with you, Johnny.
All right, this is, this is, uh, this is an easy one. Uh, my biggest contributors are right here, my left hand and my right hand. It's, it's me, it's the hard work that I do, it's, it's my financing that goes into paying for all my campaign, which is pretty much for a city council is city signs, right? And so, it's pretty easy to answer that question. Should I ever seek donations or try to be a part, I'd always disclose that fairly and openly, there's no reason, there's no, no, nothing nefarious there, just keep it open, let people know what you're doing, but it is coming from me, that's the, the, I recognize that I'm able to do this because of hard work and time that's been put into it, allows to give me some free time to be able to do this too.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, uh, my largest contributors, uh, are my accountant, that's me, um, my, uh, my landscaper, that's also me, um, and, uh, I, I can't, uh, preclude my wife from this, because she's the one that allows me to do that, 'cause I don't really own any of that And, uh, in fact, those are my only contributors.
Perfect, thank you, Brian.
Me?
On to you, Derek.
So, my biggest contributors is myself, and then, the support of my wife is what I love, and so, that's it, it's an easy question.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. I have received campaign donations. The biggest one was from my uncle Marvin, who happens to live in Pleasant View, uh, Marvin Raineson is his name, he gave me five hundred dollars, for which I was very grateful. I gave myself a personal loan of four hundred dollars, and then I received contributions unsolicited, from Sean Myers, who is a close family friend of many years, that was two hundred and fifty dollars, Gage Frower, who is a county commissioner who I work for, two hundred dollars, Jim Harvey, also a county commissioner who I work for, two hundred dollars, and a neighbor, uh, who lives in, well, not right next door, but in my neighborhood, a friend, Van Christensen, uh, gave me one hundred dollars, and those are the contributions that I have received.
Perfect. All right, thank you, Sean. Um, so our next one, public safety resources and trade-offs. So, we're all aware that Pleasant View is growing, and our dollars are limited. So, what's your plan to ensure competitive wages, um, or competitive compensation, staffing and equipment for police and fire while staying fiscally responsible? Name your top two budget levers, and what you defer if needed. And let's start with Brian.
Okay, uh, so, how I work, uh, budget like this, how I work my own budget, how I, uh, work on pretty much anything in my life, um, if you've ever worked in aircraft, there are jobs that are, you know, important, there are jobs that, that need to be done, it's constant production, um, then you have the hot jobs that need to get done, because something's behind, but then you have what they call AOG, that's aircraft on the ground, that's like, if this doesn't go, nothing stops, and, or nothing goes, uh, and everything shuts down. And I feel like those are, in, in this, in city operations as well, those are the most important things, like our first responders, I think that's super important, we have to keep the city moving, so, that would be my top priority. And then the next thing, of course, is city services, we have to keep all other city services, we have to keep water going, things like that. Um, as far as, uh, as far as anything else, like, you know, adding a new park, or adding something else, I feel like, uh, I feel like that can be done with impact fees from builders and what have you, so, I don't see that as being something that's important to our budget.
So, that's something you would defer?
I would, yes.
Um, and then Johnny?
My, uh, my response is, is first, one of the things that I would suggest then, is bring in the business, bring in the opportunity, bring in the revenue, increase the revenue, find ways to increase that revenue, number one, bringing in the business, connecting with manufacturers who know and, and can, who will, um, bring in the tax revenue that we need, in order to meet some of the demands that start to grow, go with a growing city, right? Limit as much as you can the impact of taxes on citizens, and, um, and really push to, to grow the economy, our local economy, to, to help bring in that revenue. Now, when you go down, when you are, have, when you do get to the point of having to make a decision, it just comes down to fiscal responsibility, common sense, prioritizing what's most important, and, and, and typically, at the top of that list is the public safety, right? Making sure that we're safe, we have safe communities, that our utilities and other things are taken care of, and then everything else on that just, just is extra, and, and we have to be able to, um, prioritize what's most important. So, just taking a very common sense approach about living within our means, and making sure that we take care and, and, um, of some of the most important first, that's what I do.
I have a follow-up question for you?
Go ahead.
So, what, specifically, what would, what would you defer, or, and what would you lever?
So, I, I mean, just like anytime we, anyone, okay, so I do this in business all the time, uh, we have to, there is your base budget that you live off of, and then, depending on the year, depending on the income, depending on the opportunities that are presented to you, you make decisions about what is, um, you start looking at the future opportunities, and you weigh that against, hey, is it better to save the money, put it aside, or is it better to invest for the future? And so, specifically, if, if we're in a year where income and revenues are, are greater, then start to take a look at some of the programs that we can invest in that will give us return in the future, that might be infrastructure, it might be police, it might be, uh, the safety side of things, but very specifically, I would, I would, it, it comes down case by case, and every year, it's gonna be different, every quarter, every month, it'll be different, every week, there are opportunities to consider and make decisions that, uh, can be impactful, I think.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
Yeah, I, I agree with a lot of what Johnny just said, I think it is important that we focus on bringing business, driving sales tax, which adds, uh, to what we have available to fund the services that we need. Public safety is absolutely a top priority, along with critical infrastructure, I think those are probably the top two that need to be focused on. As far as what I would cut, uh, we have money that goes towards, look, people are gonna think I hate pickleball, and I don't, I, I really, I really enjoy playing it, but, for example, if we had a decision between funding public safety and funding the pickleball courts that just got built, the pickleball courts are getting cut, that, that's an easy decision for me to make, okay? And if my road, I said this last time, my road just got chip sealed this year, which I was grateful for, 'cause it needed it, but if I had to wait one more year, and that money was spent to do something more important, I'm okay with that, one more year is not going to destroy the road. But if it's a water main, or if, if we have a huge public safety issue, those things need to be funded. So, it's going to come down to, you know, what we have available in our, our nice-to-do fund, um, and then, non-critical infrastructure, if, if it can be delayed for a year, then we do that.
Thank you, Sean.
Can you read it to me again?
Your turn.
The question, can you read the question to me again?
Oh, yeah. Um, public safety resources and trade-offs. Pleasant View is growing, but as we know, dollars are limited. What's your plan to ensure competitive compensation, staffing and equipment for police and fire while staying fiscally responsible? Name your top two budget levers, and what you defer if needed.
Okay, so for me, like, I think we got some things going on in our city, like, for one, we gotta know, like, and I haven't looked at the police budget, so, I just know how every police department in the nation works, and that is, if you're making the most money, you go and ask for more money. So, um, if, like, our officers aren't making enough, the officers that show up when you call 911 aren't making enough, not the boss, who gets a lot of money, okay? Making over six figures in, in Pleasant View City, okay? I don't understand that, like, one bit, but, that's neither here nor there. So, anyway, he wouldn't get a raise, 'cause his raise, over a year, is substantially higher than probably every officer getting a three percent raise, does that make sense? So, a three percent raise for somebody making a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars is substantially different than a three percent raise for someone making like fifty grand. So, you know, I think the supervisors, the chiefs, the department heads, they, they can take a cut if we need to, to, uh, not a cut, but they can skip a year of a raise, and that raise, that raise between like, the, the chief and like lieutenants, can be spread out amongst the other officers to boast, to boost our, our wage, to recruitment, to everything, but how it works, if you give a three percent raise, the chief gets it too, and I don't think he should. The chief should be set on his own, or the department head, they're on their own structure, they argue for a three, five percent raise, because they get it too, and they're making three, four times more than their employee, and that's wrong. So, that's it.
Thanks, Derek. All right, my last question, and this is an important one to me, um, civility and integrity. In an era where dishonesty and inappropriate behavior has led to real-world conflict, how will you promote civility, transparency and respectful dialogue? And how should the council respond when that standard... And how should the council respond when that standard has viola, is violated? I am going to start with, let's start with you, Shawn.
Honesty and integrity are always the best policy. That's just the way it is. There is never a reason to be dishonest with the public. There's, there's never a reason to do something unethical. There's never a reason to make a decision that clearly was, was influenced or, there's just, there's never a reason for that. And as far as civility goes, discussions should be civil. There's never, it's okay to disagree, and we can disagree civilly. There, there should be disagreement. There should be different opinions. But there is never a reason for finger pointing or voices being raised in a, in a public meeting. It just, it shouldn't happen. We should be able to control our emotions and, and handle that. And I think the appropriate way to address that, if it does happen, I guess it depends on who it is that did it and whether or not the city council wants to publicly reprimand someone. I, I don't think that's a bad thing. If someone is completely out of line, it's okay for the, for the council to stand up and say, "This should not have happened. This was out of line. This is not something that we condone or agree with." Yeah, I think, again, I'm just going to reiterate, there is never a need. There shouldn't, it should never happen. In, in public office, in public service, there should never be unethical behavior or dishonesty. So, thank you.
Thank you. Derek?
Okay. Want to set the time again? And I'll wait till it gets set. There we go. Okay, so, I agree with, with what Shawn said here. But the fact is, there is corruption in our politics, man. And there is dishonest politicians. I mean, you know, I don't know how much at the local level, I think just lying. But like, you get up there, look at all of our federal guys. They go up there, "Hey, I'm making 100 grand a year. Come back home six years later. I'm $6 million richer." You know? I mean, they wrote a book, or who knows what they did, you know what I mean? And so, I think there's massive corruption in all of it. And so, I think, I think when you're responding to the public, especially at a city, because you're, you're close to the, all these other people, like even state representative, they go away, they come back, they give you some lip service and move on, you know what I mean? Because they don't want to talk to you. At the city, you're firsthand getting it. And I, I really think, like, I've had some disagreements with people. And online, of course, because that's where we get in fights with everybody, I guess. Anyway, then when, when I get to meet, meet with them and go one-on-one and they explain their stance and things, it makes more stance, or more sense to me. And so then, I'm like, "Why didn't you just explain that in the first place? Then I wouldn't have been said the crap I said." So, yeah, I think there's a major breakdown in the communication aspect. So, yeah, I don't know about like, I don't think you need to be dishonest. I don't think you need to be anything. Like I said, you just say it like it is. The chips are going to fall where they may. And if you're not supposed to be in that position, then like leave. What's the big deal? Like, I don't understand what, you know what I mean? Like, I just don't under, I don't understand a lot of people. Because you want to like people, and then you complain about how your city or your state's run. And it's like, you vote for the same people. The name has changed. Why don't you put someone else in there who will definitely shake it up? That's it.
Thanks. Brian?
Okay. I'll start off with this statement. There are 50 states. I like to ask people, where do they think Utah falls in, in, from 1st to 50th in, as, in corruption, in state government? We're number two. Number two over California, over New York, over Illinois. We're number two behind New Jersey. That's insane. And so, I've spent most of my time in politics, honestly, trying to keep the crooks out. I've even had to censure politicians. Here in Weber County, we did censure a politician for some of the crooked things that they did. And that person is no longer a, a state senator. I wrote that censure. That's how serious I am about, should things be done right? And should people follow the law?
Thank you, Brian.
In, in regards to the, the honesty question, it's pretty simple for me. My mom taught me, be honest in your thoughts, in your words, and in your deeds. And it's simple. And, and there's no, there's no gray area. It is be honest. And if you, if it gets you in trouble, it gets you in trouble. If it's, if it helps in, in any effort in any other way, you can always look at yourself. You can go to bed at night. You can say your prayers, and you can do your, your own personal contemplation. But you should always be true to yourself in your thoughts, your words, and your deeds. And that's, it's that simple.
Absolutely. Thank you, John. Johnny? All right, so for this last part, each candidate is going to be allotted two-minute closing. And I'm, we're just going to go down. So, Shawn, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you to the Fraternal Order of Police for sponsoring this tonight. We do appreciate it. It's always good to be up here and to hear other ideas. I've gotten to know these guys a little bit over the last few months. And I think they're all good people. So, as, as far as my closing statement, again, I would just say, I have years of public service. And that's what I do. That's what I know. I do have, again, that expertise in, in planning and zoning, which I think can be very beneficial to Pleasant View. And I will do my very best to, to serve with honor, to serve with integrity, and to just do my very best. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Shawn. Derek?
My closing? Okay, so my closing would just be, well, I'm a definite no on high-density housing. If we meet the requirements, we got the trailer park out here. We got some other low-density housing stuff going on. The state has kind of set a guideline. If we meet that, then we should just stay where we're at and not add anymore. And I'll argue with anybody on high-density housing, because I was a cop. That high-density housing turns into low-income housing. And the cops spend all of their time at low-income housing. It's a fact. And so, crime rates don't go up. They 100% go up. Stats, you can look at stats, numbers. Numbers lie. Liars use numbers, man. And so, I can show you numbers one way. Somebody can show you numbers another way. It's just a fact. So, like, from my personal experience, low-income housing, high-density housing is not good. It lowers your property value, for one. Like, how can it not? You know what I mean? Have somebody come up here and tell me how it doesn't? And it's going to do this for your community? Like, what, have my garage get broke into? So, I'm definitely a no for that. Business, I'm 100% yes for business. Sales tax on business brings the revenue in that we need. We get money off sales tax. We get peanuts off housing. And so, if we can increase the business aspect, that's where we'll get more money to do more things. My little, one of the issues I have with public safety is that go to the city, we fill out a form to have a, a block party. You know, the chief of police has to check the box to approve it. Not one police officer shows up to a block party being held. I guess they're so busy, they can't. And so, that's an issue that will be resolved. If a city councilman's there, they show up. But that's it.
Thanks, Derek. Brian, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to thank the FOP for the opportunity to do this. When I'm elected, I will work with the FOP, work with the officers to, to engage them in the schools, to engage them in the, in the community with the people. I think that's one of the biggest problems that people have. They dehumanize the police. And then they think, well, you know, they just hate them. And, and I think that's a, a major problem. So, I've had a lot of experience. I've run, I've, I've actually started two businesses and run other people's businesses before. One of those businesses, I sold. It's still in business. I volunteered at, at the Davis ATC as a, on their employer advisory committee. I'm not part of the Good Old Boys Club. I think that's huge. And if you want to see where the crime is, go to West Haven and see where all those apartments are. I spoke with the sheriff a couple of years ago, and, and he asked, he actually posited this question to me. "Where do you think all the crime is?" I said, "Well, it's probably down in Washington Terrace, right?" He goes, "No." He said, "You see all the, that high-density stuff down in, down in West Haven? We spend most of our time there." That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
So, I'm going to, first, I want to thank Fraternal Order of Police. I'd also put a shout-out to our police chief, Stetson Talbot. Grateful for his service and his team's service. And also to Sheriff Ryan Arbonne and the work that he does here in the, in the county. Grateful for those guys. I'm going to, I'm going to take my time and, to the remaining time. And I'm just going to, I'm, I'm going to give an example of not something that I will do, but the something that I did. Five years ago, at the, at the 20th anniversary of 9/11, I was, I was talking with Jenny Taylor, who's part of the Major Brent Taylor Foundation. And she asked me, "It's the 20th anniversary of 9/11. Are we going to do something different to honor our police, fire, medical, and military for that heroic day?" And I said, "How long do I have to think about it?" She said, "You got until tomorrow, and we're going to go meet with Sheriff Ryan Arbonne. And we're going to come up with a, with a, with something." And so, that night, I went home and I sat down at my computer. And I recently worked, worked on a, a project that took these four-foot-by-eight-foot printed boards. And I started to collect images and videos and my thoughts about that, that fateful day of 9/11. And 400 of these boards later, and a presentation to the county, we put together what we call the "We Remember 9/11" event. And it started here in Weber County. We, working with the fairgrounds, which, if any of you pretended or were part of that, we build a framework and a walkthrough experience with a pop-up museum that basically gave honor to our police, fire, medical, and military, showed the images of 9/11, and gave a chance for you to go up to a police, a member of the police, fire, medical, military, and thank them for their service. And then we bust in the local community kids. And then we did that now in five counties. And 50,000-plus people later, it has changed things. I'm going to take a second longer because I, I do want to mention this. At the most recent one we did in Spanish Fork, I was there with Sheriff Mike Smith and his team when we were having our VIP opening event. And at, at that event, at that moment, at 12:09, it was on September 10th this year, and if you remember, of the event, the tragic event that happened in Utah County at UVU, I watched as members of our police, fire, medical, military all got the call at 12:09. And they stood up from our event, and they ran to their vehicles and went 15 minutes down the road to take, to, to, to deal with something that they had no idea of what they were going to go into. And I'm grateful for those who run into danger. And I'm grateful for those who serve. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all. Let's give our candidates a round of applause. Any questions from community members, please join us up here. And it can be for one of the candidates, all of the candidates, whatever you prefer.
Thank you. I've got a whole list of stuff here, since I'm the only one really here. Can I ask more than one question?
Sure.
Or should I just, now we're done?
Yeah. Go ahead.
This is for everybody. How committed, and it's kind of a two-part question. How committed are you to serving for the, the four years? And you, what, what is your understanding of what it's going to take to be on the, on the city council? Time, commitment, and those types of things? Because I just, I'd just like to hear your thoughts on serving for four years, giving it all, what your understanding of what it takes to be a citizen.
Brief comments. I won't start the timer, but we can just go down the line.
Okay. Yes, I'm fully committed to the four-year term. I have no plans to do anything else or to move. And I think it is, it's more than two meetings a month, certainly. This is being engaged in the city. This is attending the events and helping to plan the events that the city has. This is engaging with the youth city council. This is meeting regularly with the employees. This is, it, it's almost like a part-time job, in, in my opinion. So, I am, I'm willing and prepared to give the time necessary to do a good job.
So, for me, I'm retired, so I understand the commitment. I don't have a job, so it'd be easy to attend. The other thing is, the only thing that would prevent me or preclude me is a family issue. That would, because my family's my priority now. I worked, and I put them second or third on my list. And I learned from my bad ways, and so now, they're number one for me. So, that would be the only thing precluding me from attending any of the events or anything like that. And, yeah, that's it.
I realize that there's a lot to this job. I have a feeling it's going to be more like all the other nights of the week, too, and weekends. I'm okay with that. It's actually what I'm signing up for, I believe. I'm committed to the full four years. And I had a wise city council member once tell me that it's going to take you more than four years to accomplish the things you want to accomplish. And I believe he was right. And so, it may take longer than that.
Great question. I think that my response is, no matter where I'm, what I'm doing or where I'm serving, you're getting 100% of me. That I'm focused on giving my talent and experience to that. But you're also, I look for the synergies that I can serve. So, whether it be a community event that we're required to be a part of, or whether it be just something that I can give, my thought process, when I'm committed or when I commit to something, you get all of it. You get the focus that, and that also includes any connections or opportunities to, to, that, that I may have, resources. Our, our greatest thing we got is our time. We got to balance that, obviously, with family and other things that go on. But when I'm there and I'm present, I will be present. And I will be focused on whatever, whatever the topic, whatever the issue. And I'll be willing to work with whatever community member that I'm, that I'm serving with.
Just, just a quick follow-up from my perspective. As potential mayor, hopefully, I do plan on utilizing the city council. That's what I want to know, you know, what your commitment is. And I think you've answered that, but that's, that's where I'm coming from. There, there needs to be engagement with the community in a lot of aspects. And we talked about a lot of those today. That's kind of where I'm coming from. Thank you. Is it okay to ask another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Or what, a couple more minutes? Okay, well, I, I'll just ask a couple. I've been sitting back, kind of, I, I would like to be part of the debate, because there's several things I'd like to say and clarify. But how well do you think you know the issues of the city right now? You know, Brian talked about, you know, it, it takes a while to, to learn. You know, your first 90 days, I, I, that's really a weird question. But there are so many issues of the city. How well do you feel that you understand the issues of the city?
Go ahead, Shawn.
Okay. All of the issues of the city, I have no idea. I feel like I do understand from a planning and zoning perspective, having served on the planning commission for the last three years and currently serving there. I think I have an idea of some of what we're facing as far as that aspect goes. But you're right, I, I don't know that I know all of the issues that the city is dealing with right now.
So, for me, I don't know all the issues of the city. And I will go like this. Hopefully, you get the mayor, and maybe your letter will address the issues of the city so that I, as a citizen, would be informed. Because like I said, when I read that letter, there ain't no information in there. It's rah-rah stuff. But people want to know what's going on in the city. And I understand, like, we can go, this most, the most informative city newsletter we get is Founder's Day, just so you know. Every other newsletter, there's nothing in it. Another question, another issue is, the police have nothing on the newsletter. Community involvement, well, where are they? They ain't there anywhere. So, like, as a city councilperson, I don't know everything that's going on. And I put that directly on city leadership for not informing me. Because they have ways to reach me. They choose not to. And so, that's where I stand on that.
So, I'm going to say that, from an engineering- So I'm going to say that from an engineering standpoint, because this is the easiest way to describe it, we have a great saying, that this is what we, this is what we know. This is what we know that we don't know. This entire room is what we don't know that we don't know. And I'm gonna say that about my, my experience with this as well.
I know what, I know I don't know everything and I, I can definitely admit that. So back to the first question that came out, and I'll answer it because it was the first 90 days, but I think it's, I dissected it the same way. When I have a project or a problem or something in front of me, I look at it to, in bite-sized pieces. Those four pieces are the procedures, understanding the procedures. I don't know all the procedures, I'm willing to learn them. I don't know all the policies, I'm willing to learn them. I recognize that people help us. People, whether past or present, have helped to shape and create the community. I would want to seek their mindset of why they made the decision they did. I want to understand their, like, putting on their glasses and understanding their perspective of why those decisions were made the way they were. And then finally, the community itself, being engaged and engulfed in the community and spending time looking around at what the community needs and, and having those, those type of communication. That's how, that's how I'd address that problem. I don't know all the problems of the city, but that's how I would tackle it.
So I've got two more quick questions. Good? And I'm gonna go to my last one first because Johnny, you hit on it a little bit there. I am so disappointed in Pleasant View, the lack of care that they've given to the, to a major part of the city council. I'm just, I'm so disappointed that it's not here. So my question is, and Johnny, again, I appreciate what you said, how are we going to get that as a city council, as a mayor in the city council? How are we gonna get that engagement into those people that don't really care? That has been my biggest thing that I've found as I've been going door-to-door, doing some different things, is people don't care unless there is some big issue. But they don't care about all the things that really make, that make up things that we do every day, or every week, or every month. So how are you gonna get those people involved?
I've tried to answer this question three times in past debates and.
So what's the answer?
I have no idea. So Steve, I've been in public service for 20 years. I've been, again, like I said, I've been to hundreds of planning commission meetings. People don't show up unless the issue directly affects them. They just don't. And I don't think, I don't know that it's a lack of they don't care, but they don't know. They don't know what they're not caring about. Somehow we've got to get that information out there. Whether that's, you know, putting, what issues is the city dealing with in the newsletter or online and, and soliciting comments or, maybe that's a way? I, I don't know. I think there's also a perception about public meetings, that they're long and they're boring and they're, and that people's opinions don't matter anyway. And I think it's, it's important that people understand when their opinion does count and when it doesn't. Because it is frustrating to come to a meeting where you're allowed to give public comment, but it doesn't really matter. And people walk away from that meeting not understanding that the law doesn't actually sometimes even allow them to give that public comment, that's just what happened, or that it's, it just doesn't really matter. The city council can make whatever decision they want. So somehow, those are barriers I've been trying to work on for 20 years and I don't know the answer yet, but I am willing to keep trying and hopefully find that answer. So I'm sorry, I don't have that answer for you.
Darn it! One last.
I know the answer. The answer is transparency. People need to know how their elected officials are voting on what issues they're voting on. It can't be voted on like code 211. What, like, everybody's like, what's that? And I voted yes. It's the dog ordinance. What's that? You know what I mean? Like, like, there needs to be more, if, to get community involvement in anything, they have to be informed. They're not, you're not informed with anything that goes on in Pleasant View. Except for Founder's Day, the council and mayor have that, that stuff down-packed. Because they kick it off a good thing, the communication is excellent, and what do you have? A massive turnout due to communication. So the communication is the issue and the sole problem, I think. And so I think if, if the issues, like, we have issues in Pleasant View, it's just I'm not in government no more, so I don't know what they are. And so if I'm in it, that would be my thing, is trying to shine light on the issue because people will get involved. Pleasant View is a crazy city. Like, I moved from, like, I was in Ogden, I moved to Willard, now I can Pleasant View and I'm like, what's wrong with all these people? I was telling my wife, they're all like, nice to me and stuff, they want something from me. And so like, I was all like paranoid people and then it's just, people are just nice, I guess. And now I'm like, fine with it, but like, at first it was kind of crazy. But Pleasant View shows up. They show up to the food trucks. They show up to all the events we have. They show up when they are informed. Like, everything the city puts on, when they make an effort to get a turnout, there's a turnout. It's just there's not any effort made for like the city council meetings for the things. It's just, show up to this, that, you know what I mean? Yeah, good idea, bring some cinnamon rolls. I'll go get a cinnamon roll. You know what I mean? So, I mean, maybe that needs to happen, I don't know.
I think that was highly effective. Also, I mean, reminding them prior to, you know, when I, like I was talking to him about that, when I did the, the cleaning, when I was a cleaning coordinator, it was contact people the night before, contact them that morning, and let them know that their cinnamon rolls are there. There were a lot of times, we were cleaning windows and picking up trash outside because everything else was done. We had huge turnout. And I didn't mind spending a couple extra bucks of my own money to make that happen. I think it's super important that we do have, again, Pleasant View city-run Facebook page. I think that's, I think that's really big with, you know, everybody's, you go into the break room at work and people are nose-down in their phones. I walk in, I'm like, oh, it's a great conversation around here, you know? Not a word is being said, it's crazy. There could be like 20 people in there, dead silent. Also, I don't think it would be a bad idea to have some of those events, like the food trucks and stuff like that, on city council nights, right where the city council is. We could combine some of those things and start getting people to show up and get engaged. I'd love to see something between our, our local police force and, and the community. Like, for instance, with the block watch. We had one down in Arizona before at one place I lived in because we were kind of the high-end neighborhood around where, where the rest of it was kind of a little sketchy nearby. It's no longer that way, it's all really nice now, but what happened is, you know, there are people that, people would go and rob places like ours. You know, climb the fences and, and the walls and, and steal from the homes there. I have to be honest that I had a dog and my daughters were in high school, so all the kids there knew that I had guns, but that sort of eliminated my problem with it. But what I'm getting at is that if you have the, having a brain fart here. If you, if you have that, you know, the police there, that's what we did, we brought them in and said, hey, what can we do? They explained to us how much they had going on and how to prioritize a call to them when it's really important. And, and also things to watch out, things to, like, clear out around your windows, the bushes and different things like that. What are the best things to have? The lighting and stuff like that. And then, and then we started a block watch. And it got to the point where then our neighborhood was constantly on, on a text alert to everybody. As soon as something happened anywhere, the whole neighborhood found out. And that really worked out well.
Steve, this is a really important issue, right? You obviously came out here to express your concern about this. And you, and I think this is a great example of what we, how we look at this issue. Number one, when something is presented to us, let's, let's break it down, like this issue you bring up about community involvement. Number one, the first thing is their awareness. That has, that's the first hurdle. The second hurdle is then, once I'm aware of it, do I have time? And now I'm competing with something, right? I can do this or I can do that. And if it's attendance to an event like this, then I'm choosing that over something else that I could be doing tonight. That's, that's the choice that comes in. And then finally, the interest level that I have in evaluating, am I gonna take my time to go out to this event? And my interest level is going to be personal to everyone here. Everyone is here for a different reason. And I think that when you start to look at, when you look at the interest, you can start to break it down and get in the mindset of those who potentially could be here. So who are those groups that could be here? It could be our youth, it could be young adults, it could be adult and married, and it can be the elderly. And to this event, none of them showed up. And they all chose, they, whether they were aware of it first, and second, they chose if it was important for them to find out or not. Then finally is, if they were aware and they thought it was important, then what is their role? How do, what's their engagement? And those, that simple exercise will help to solve the problem, get us closer to a better solution and getting more people involved, right? And breaking it down by the different category. If I'm, if I'm, if I'm youth, what would I have needed to be out here? Maybe it's the cinnamon rolls, right? Or something that got them out here. If it's the young adults, maybe it was the, the, maybe it's something that they know that they're going to, that they're gonna be involved with an activity that's going on in the community. If it's the married, maybe it's an issue that's related to their children. If it's the elderly, it's something to, to, to come out and, and be involved in something in the community that they would, that they would be specific to them. There's got to be a reason to come out to it. Otherwise, you're giving it to your representatives to make the decisions and do their thing and hope that they do what's in the best interest of the city.
So when I'm mayor, that is one of the first things we're gonna try to tackle, is involving people, in the citizens. So all of you, whoever wins, know that that's coming. I have one more quick question. Eric, are we good? The issues with the city are not popular, you know, they're not the big flashy things. And, and one thing that we, I mean, with the exception of the Sunday School, you know, answers of roads, streets, staff, all those different things, one of the main things that we have to deal with is water. I want to know, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit, and Derek, this is a little bit to you, just a little bit, because I want to know what your understanding is of our water and our water needs. Because we don't have the money right now to do what we want to do. What, what do you understand about our water needs, just very briefly, and then I'll be
So I understand that Pleasant View City does provide water to part of the city. Part of the city is within the boundaries of the Bonavista district and they provide the water. But Pleasant View has aging infrastructure that is expensive to replace but needs to be replaced. And water is a finite resource. So that's, that's my understanding of where we're at. We need to make sure that, that we can afford to provide the water to our residents and, and that's through infrastructure and that's through making sure that we're able to afford the water we buy from Weber Basin. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of the way it is.
And so I don't know a lot about the water issues we got here. I know we, you know, in the last debate, Sarah brought up that we have funds for a water tower, but we haven't completed the water tower and started building it. And so if we got a grant for the water tower, those funds need to be spent in a timely manner or whatever it is, right? And I don't know about that. And so, but the water in general? Let me ask you a question. How can a governor require me to build high-density housing and we don't have water to provide for it? Well, the answer's no, we don't have water. You know, and it's like, oh, well, you don't get money now. Well, then I guess we don't get money. You know, that, that's the issue, is high-density housing's being pushed across everywhere for some reason. If we don't have water for it, why are we doing it? Does a single-family home take as much as that apartment complex is gonna take? It's not. And so, you know what I mean, I can get five houses maybe on this, this area where I'm gonna have all these twin homes or whatever it's gonna be. And so that's, that's my argument is, if we don't have the water, you know what I mean? Like, I know up there in, what's that, up there at 1100, all the way at the top up there, I know they hit a, they hit a spring up there. I was up there, they hit a spring and then Pineview came and tapped into it. And they took it. And so, well, that's who took it. So, but that's what I mean, like, and see, and I don't know enough about that, I just know, like, they were up there doing all the work. So, like, you know, and I don't know enough with the state on regulations on that, because I think if it's, if it's ours, then we should get it. The state, you know, but there's like all these little codes and stuff. So I don't know enough about that, but I do know every law there is invented, and he knows this, because he deals with it. There are loopholes in every single one of them. So you have to read them and you have to find out how to massage it to fit the law but still get what we need. And so, like, as far as water, I don't know what the water issue is. And so that, that would be my.
So from what I understand, we have enough water at this point to, for the number of homes that we have, but not necessarily for any more business or any more homes. I don't know, I don't know if it's any more homes, but I know that we can't afford to add any more business at least onto that water supply. At least our own, I don't know about the Bonaventure one, or Bonavista. That's what I know about that, or at least what I've gathered from what I've learned. Also, I see it as, I know that we have problems with our infrastructure and I know that, because I've had it shut down on my street, you know that, right? And I've learned some, I've learned a few things from that and that we have regulators, pressure regulators on down the hill to control the pressure down lower. And another problem that we have that sort of relates to water, there are cases where there's too much water. And I don't mean that kind of water, I mean, there's an area right behind my house, and I think Steve's aware of it because he's right in the same area, where Ivory Homes is building homes and they decided, you know, we're not gonna build on these other lots because we can't control the water coming out of the hill. We have, all through that area up above it, they have an issue with water. All the people across the street from me up the hill have, have water leaking out of their yards and flooding basements and other issues like that. Down below me, almost right across, right across from Steve, actually, guy over there, people bought that house and had four sump pumps in the basement to control the water. We have some, we have some, that hill bleeds water. And of course, we need to spend the money on it, right? But I, I sometimes wonder, again, I go back to disruptive technologies, right? Would it be possible to tap into some of those, cut back on the amount of water into some of these people's basements and actually use that water to, to feed Pleasant View? And I know that, again, goes back to spending more money on it, but would it help us? And, and it's something we'd have to look into, I'd have to look into because I don't know. But it, it reminds me of the spring down there in North Ogden, in North Ogden, it's constantly running. So I see that as, as a great source. I think our water is good, it tastes great. So, at least compared to Phoenix, which is not hard to beat. That's all I have on it.
Steve, the extent of what I know for the water in the city is that we have culinary water and we have secondary water. And outside of that, then I'm not knowledgeable, outside of that, to know what is best, what is the best water use for our cities. But I will offer this. As a member of the city council, I would tap into my personal connections here. Some of you know, my brother serves as the director under the governor for the Department of DNR, Department of Natural Resources. And they, that is the, that is the entity that, that runs the state's water issues. And I have a frontline, I can call him up anytime I want to, ask him questions and understand it better. If, I'm sure, and I know that they have programs that come out to educate communities and to help to give whatever the expertise that they have that's available, I think this is a bigger state issue. This is a greater state issue, a Great Salt Lake issue, right? There's so much that ties into this natural limited resource that we have. And I think we need to engage with those who are perceived as the experts at knowing it. And I'm not one of those yet. But I'd love to, I'd love to engage and reach out and have them be connected.
Whoever wins, final statement, I would hope that you would talk to those people to know about the water, about the different things. Because there is a lot of things that's happened in Pleasant View City, a lot of good things have happened. A lot of good things have happened. But there's a whole, we could spend an hour on our water needs. We're going to have to have a bond for the tank that we're gonna have to have to utilize the water. So please, reach out. Educate yourselves, just like we want to educate the residents. We have to. Do that, please. And for anybody who would like to see the meeting minutes and the votes, I have it on my, it's there. And it gives you context of how they vote. Not just, you know, who voted. But it's there. So I'd be happy to educate anybody that would like to. Thanks.
Thank you.
You guys did a great job. And I'm so sorry.
Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you so much. Let's get another round of applause.